Let's go ahead and get started. First up is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up, as per ORS 294.453, the governing body must hold a budget hearing on the dates specified in the in the public notice to receive citizens' testimony on the budget.
Could you just, for technical purpose, is it the Budget Committee or the Board required to hold that?
The Board.
The Board.
Is that what it said?
It doesn't say either on here.
All right, okay, thank you.
So before Jane starts on the budget changes and prior to testimony, I'll have Susie update us currently on the reduction in force.
I'm happy to let you know that we have no certified or classified staff on layoff, only four people that have cut hours, not full. We have nobody on full layoff.
Thank you. That's excellent.
We need some confetti or something for that one. That's that's big.
Yeah.
Well, good work, Susie.
Oh, yeah, Susie, Jane, I mean, I'll go there again, but awesome.
Except for the portion that you still have, four people getting reduced hours. I take it that that wasn't at their choice, and we need to make sure we do what we can to get them.
And we will. It's four people that have less than two hours that has been cut, and when positions are added in that building, we will add that first.
Thank you.
So thanks for asking that question.
Okay, Jane.
Good evening. Becca has my clicker. So the budget that we are presenting tonight is very much the same budget that the Budget Committee approved. There are only two changes that were made to the budget we are proposing to you for adoption. And the first one is the general fund. So in the general fund, when we presented it to the Budget Committee, at that time, we did not know the positions as far as which people would be eliminated. So we had negative FTE lines. It was something that the software allows me to do so that we could know the correct dollars and the correct FTE. And so for the budget tonight, I've eliminated those negative FTE lines and put in the actual positions. And so it changed the dollars between the function a little bit. The total general fund did not change. The total FTE cut did not change. It just corrected positions to match reality. And so that's the only change I'm asking you as the Board to make a part of the adopted budget. And then we also did not receive additional funding information. You know, I thought maybe we'd receive changes from the state or ODE, and we did not. So we'll just wait and see. And then the second change is this Title Grant. And I talked with the Budget Committee about this, that we received $556,000 in Title I. And so we've added that for the budget appropriation. At this time, we have not received confirmation that for sure we got those funds, and we have not worked with the principals, of course, to make changes. So what I'm asking you to do is approve the expenditure authority for that being added to the 200 Fund, to Title I. And then it looks like it will be approved, and then we will work with the principals. Bonnie, our Title I coordinator, will work with us to put together that program. So those two changes increase the total budget by the $556,000. So other than that, the budget is the same as what was approved. Are there questions?
Did our poverty increase 20%? Or it can't it can't just be an increase in poverty that led to a 20% increase?
It was, there's winners and losers. When they go across the state and adjust the poverty rates for the funding, that's what changed it, and ours increased by the 556. It is not that much of a percentage increase, but it did increase the dollars.
Okay.
So it could be the data behind it, because they no longer do just free and reduced applications because they found that wasn't super accurate. And so I think there was a little bit there. But there was also a formula change into where it went. So the total number didn't change, but we gained in other districts.
I can't remember, I should know this, but Title's not funded like specialhead on child counter census basis, is it? Or is it?
It was a poverty base change to the formula.
Kid, goodbye kid. Okay, interesting. That seems like a big increase.
Yes.
We're incredulous.
Yeah.
I have a process question, I guess.
Roger, go ahead.
The Budget Committee approved a proposed budget. Jane is, I guess, recommending changes to that proposed budget. And at some point, we either accept that document into the record, or we take action to amend that approved budget, to approve a final budget. I think we get to just set aside that document and those numbers they approved without addressing amending those.
Although I would say, Roger, that the Budget Committee was fully aware of the possibility of the $550,000 additional.
This is just procedural, dotting the i's and crossing the t's. And then you have an approved budget by a committee required by the state, and any action we take to change that should be procedurally correct, for lack of a better term.
So, Roger, in the adopted budget, it will show the approved amount and the adopted amount.
So I think what he, I think what he's saying is we have to approve what they approved and then make changes to it?
No, because when you vote as part of the Board and Budget Committee, you have agreed to approve the budget that was proposed to the Budget Committee. And now, in the process by the budget law, it's the Board's duty to adopt the budget.
But to adopt whose budget? The Budget Committee's budget or the budget you present?
The budget that we present to you. So it's very common to have changes between the approved and the adopted.
If we didn't want to approve it, our only other option is to get the Budget Committee back together, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Procedural, you have this better than I do.
Okay, so when we get to a motion to approve the budget, maybe I'll take a swing at, I mean, what you don't want to do is, what we don't want to do is make that entire exercise mute.
Right. No, because that's, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from Board?
So I would just add, Roger, that is why those slides show the differences in appropriation. It has to be a part of our record, what changes between approved and adopted. So that's why I was very specific on the function changes in the slides. So we have that record.
Thank you.
No other comments from the Board? Okay, next up is a public comment. First up, I see is Ms. Joy Huddleston. Sorry, Liz. You're on there too. My apology.
Can I ask a quick question, Susie?
Yeah.
I missed the first part of your staffing report. What did you say?
So there's no one left on the certified recall list. Everybody's been recalled, and there's no one left on the classified. But there are four people that had a half an hour to two hours cut, and there's four of those people individually from a half an hour to two hours that we need to recall their hours.
Okay, so were there still some positions cut?
Yes.
Even though the teachers weren't?
Oh, yes.
Okay, all right, because that just might change what I'm saying.
So let, give me one second, Joy. So I forgot to call for any translation. Could you come up? And we're good? Nobody? Good, okay. Go ahead, Joy.
Okay, so I'm Joy Huddleston. I'm here to talk about the 24 elementary blends that the district has created that are a direct result of the budget and district decision making. Part of the budget problem is due to declining student enrollment. And creating these blends, which in many cases is increasing class size, is going to further that problem. I ran into a parent just last night that is seriously considering homeschooling her child rather than having them in a class of 29 second and third graders combined. Liberty had two first grade classes with 19 students each and two second grade classes with 23 students each, and that student would have been in one of those second grade classes. Now they're being combined to make blended classes of 29. That's assuming we get just three SLC students, which makes absolutely no sense, and is a violation of contract for class size. Second grade threshold is 27. And Liberty also always gets new students in the fall. I don't know why, but especially in third grade. The district never asked teachers if this model makes sense, or even if it's doable for us, which is another violation in our contract. They would have been told that in the majority of the cases, it is not in the best interest of students. The blends make teaching much more complicated and overwhelming, and creates inequality in learning outcomes for our students. I've been told that at one of the first budget meetings, Superintendent Gardner, sorry, Gardner acknowledged that the number one factor that impacts student learning is teachers, and he included certified and classified assistants. Yet, I don't know if these numbers are still true, but they were considering cutting 27 certified positions, 14 classified, and two district level admin. So likely two of the 43 positions cut are ones that don't work directly with students. Now, those numbers might have changed, but we're still looking at the majority of cuts are coming from those who are working directly with kids. Is that the best use of our resources when our main purpose is to educate children? In these times of limited funds, the district should be looking at how to invest the resources they have to best serve our students. We have to put our students first. That is our job. I'm asking you to get creative and find a solution to the problem of blends that has been created by the budget. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Liz, you're up. Welcome.
Thank you. Liz Craig, Greater Albany ACE, Classified Employee President. I just wanted to make a comment or a shout out to HR and the hard work and the really, and hiring a month before us and things like that. But shout out to HR for sure, because there was a lot of work that went into making sure that people didn't lose benefits and things like that, even though there was a loss of time for folks. I also, when we were doing the listening sessions and things, the question has come up many times about where attorney fees are budgeted, where's the line item, how much money, all of those things go, like, I've heard a lot of comments about that. And I believe Andy said it's in staffing.
I don't recall that.
Okay, I could have heard it wrong. I just, I would like it to be more transparent where we find that information out. And then also, our contracts are posted online, but the AAA contract isn't online. And so I would love the Board to think about that, to again promote more transparency in giving the community all of the information that is available. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
Okay, next up is Board Business Superintendent Evaluation Summary Report. Do we actually have slides for that or not really? Nope.
I think you just have the summary available there online.
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask while we have it and while we've been received Jane's report and while we've then received public testimony, should we approve the budget or deliberate on the budget at this point? It seems a disconnect to me to move on to other business when
Yeah.
this budget is the most important thing we'll do tonight, maybe all year, probably all year.
And I don't necessarily be somewhere else we're doing it.
L3?
It normally occurs before, I mean, normally occurs at this time.
Okay. Budget, okay. All right, yeah, I agree. Let's do that. That makes sense. Do I hear a motion?
So I'll make a motion, and then I would ask for discussion. And my motion would be to amend and adopt the budget approved by the Budget Committee as reflected in Jane's presentation and the information she's provided.
Can I clarify, are we doing L3 and L4? And do we need to also do L5 or just 3 and 4?
Oh, I see there's a.
It's L4.
Just L4.
And L, yeah, L4 and L5 are related to the 2526 budget.
So L3, which says budget appropriation?
Is related to the 2425.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, good. Okay, thank you. L4 and L5.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
I was looking for discussion.
Oh, go ahead, Roger.
So we've, we've received some testimony at a Budget Committee hearing. We engaged Mr. Chairman at the last listening session, we had a request, I think under business from the public at the last Budget Committee meeting, related to the budget. The request on blended classes is a good example of, you know, where we find ourselves. And that is to not have the financial resources to do all of the things that we would like to do. And so, you know, the budget before us, I think, represents the best effort and the best value for the district based on the resources we have and the goals of educating kids. I want to address for a minute the conversation about just reducing what's referred to as the reserve fund from 8% to 7%, and how that would, in theory, free up a million dollars to do more of the things that we want to do. And I think to call it a reserve fund is a misnomer. Because if you if you start at the beginning of the school year, based on contracts and other financial commitments, our liabilities exceed the cash on hand just about all the time. And so what what you have is cash on hand as you're operating an organization with $120 million budget?
137.
137 million dollar budget, and how many employees?
1150, 1200.
1200 employees and thousands of kids. And so it wouldn't take much, especially in September, October, for one of the funders of this organization to not come through, to be scrambling to meet payroll in our current predicament. And so reducing the ending balance, reducing the cash on hand increases those risks. Certainly, I don't think over time that's a place the district wants to be. I've welcomed a conversation about what a reserve should be. And we really haven't had that conversation. The conversation that I've heard is reduce your reserve fund so we can stave off some unpleasant things for another year. And that conversation has been absent the risks of doing that. The risks are that you get in a place where you can't pay your bills. You get to a place where you're going to have to go out and borrow money. You get to a place where you're going to have to set up a credit line. You get to a place where you're borrowing money for operations. And over time, it wouldn't seem to be that would be in the best interest of the district. And I've not heard any testimony that refutes that. Gaps as a large organization and the volumes of cash are large. And so when your payroll is $10 million a month, is having 8% in reserve, really that much money? I think it's not. I think it might have been before COVID, but there were a lot of people figuring out what they were going to do next week to cover their bills when that happened. And as I've mentioned, the other thing is that you're building a ticking time bomb in next year's budget, because your deficit spending to the tune of an extra million dollars that next year you're going to have to do something about. It's not sustainable. We had that situation with last year's budget. We made some assumptions that were optimistic, and two of those three assumptions didn't happen. And there's a significant reserve in the in the ending balance or beginning balance this year. So that, that doesn't, to me, seem like it, while it's inviting to get the things that people, to improve the situation now, I don't think over time it works. I also, you know, I got the feedback was, what, you think you're not going to get more money next year? And I do think that it's set up on a 4951, so we will get a little bit more money next year, but it won't cover our increase in costs. And this has been going on for a while for school districts and local government everywhere. Our expenses go up 5% to 7% a year, because our expenses are mostly payroll costs, and those are dictated in large part by state statute. And we get appropriated 3% to 5% in additional revenue. So every year, there's a 2% rub. Maybe sometimes it's a little less, maybe sometime it's more. But as it relates to the budget, I don't, I don't see any place we have to go in the way of changing numbers to generate additional revenue to do some of the good things that we would like to do, but are not able to at this time.
I would agree. I mean, you just have to look around the state to see some districts that are in some really bad positions right now. I think one of the things we can best do is leave ourselves in a good position, you know? And I'm very appreciative, Jane, and all the hard work of her team and Andy, for putting us in a much better financial position than we were four years ago. Anyone else want to discuss?
I do want to add that I know Joyce's comments were similar at the last listening session. One of the things that we are working on right now, we have stated and put a lot of pressure on our teachers to teach the standards at a grade level and get through them. There's a map. And there's, clearly, if you were looking at two maps, you would be under some pressure there. And so we're working to make sure that we are spending time thinking about how we're going to do that. One of the truths is that typically in our district, you may have a second grade classroom, but you have students of all abilities. Some are far below and some are far above. And what we need to do is make sure that we put together and give permission for teachers to walk away a little bit from following a map, because my wife did blends as a teacher in our, my old district, and she came home and she said, I can't meet both of these, right? And so we moved away from that. But we have to be really open and support teachers to take the opportunities that occur in a blend. The research shows that a blended classroom, mixed age classroom, and a straight, by research, they are about the same. It is still the qualities of the teacher that preeminate. And so we need, though, to be very clear with our teachers and support them as they move into this work. Were you at the training today where the principals discussed that?
I was not.
Okay. Who had the principals in, and we're working on how we're going to do that and give them permission, right? The idea that you would be expected to cover both grades the whole way is simply not feasible.
I do know that we're providing some additional work time for some lead teachers that are doing multi-age classrooms currently. I also know that we're going to provide an opportunity in August for multi-age classroom teachers to get together during our unconference time to review those projection maps. And I do know that we're working on specific strategies that teachers can use to maximize their time in classrooms with students.
And I happen to be in that meeting today. And at every group, 1, 2, 2, 3, 3, 4, 4, 5, there are at least two to three teachers that have volunteered to work on doing a yearly plan for everyone.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so since we changed that a little bit, which one of these did it cover? Was it L4?
I thought we just voted on it.
I believe that was L4. We just.
Okay. So how about L5? Do I hear a motion?
So L5 just establishes that we are, we have our fund balances appropriated according to the government accounting standards.
I move to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we'll come back to L2 and L3? Or should we do it all now? Let's do it. Okay, so L3, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve DLT financial agreement as presented. Oh, it was I3, I'm sorry.
Yep.
My mistake. I withdraw that. L3, I move to approve the 202425 budget appropriation resolution as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? L2? L2? Jane, do you want to talk to that at all? It looks like they've gone up quite a bit.
I do. I do have a couple of slides that talk about our insurance. I met with our record of agent today. And it has increased largely because of the greater market, the liability increases and the way that awards are being done through the judicial system. And so that is sure, that's the largest reason for our increase. The increase was, they had warned me that it was going to increase. And so we are within budget. Our workers' comp increased based on market, but also based on our numbers. 2023, we had a lot of claims and a couple of them. One in particular was very costly. So that is impacting our mod rate and causing our workers' comp to go up. And then the next slide, the agent talked with me about the sexual molestation, the misconduct liability insurance. Their costs have gone up a lot. So they had discontinued for next year, 25, 26, the full 20 million liability limit. And they were asking each district to apply. And in that application, we had to explain the training that we do, all of the trainings we offer to all of our staff. And then you qualified either for 1 million, 5 million, 10 million. Those were, and we qualified for the 10 million coverage. And that's included in the rates that I showed you. Some districts are purchasing additional. And I visited with Andy. We'll look into that if we feel like we need to do that.
So the thing that was really surprising to me is like, it was like 15% to 25% increase on all these leased. That's huge.
Yeah.
And this is just another indicative result of the costs that are facing the district and why we need that reserve fund to be able to take care of these surprises when they come up. Because there's just, if you spend it all, you have no room to wiggle.
Right.
Any more discussion?
Well, I just, this is not a one-off in the insurance industry right now. For the last 18 months, the private sector would be happy to see only a, what was the increase?
18.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's seeing anywhere between 50 and 100% if you can get it on some stuff. So this isn't good. It could be worse.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve the insurance renewals as presented.
Paul's second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we'll skip back into where we're supposed to be. We're going to the summary report for superintendent evaluation. I know at the end of last meeting, we talked about this. Any discussion on this? Questions?
Did we have a slide on this? I see there's something here, but.
I don't think so. Or maybe. You have a summary. Okay. Are we able to pull that up?
No, there's nothing.
Mine wasn't showing.
Are we then ready for a motion? Is that what we're doing? Okay. All move to approve the superintendent evaluation review summary as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, superintendent contract extension. We have a new contract for the superintendent. One of the things we looked at, and Ryan and I were able to compare our superintendent salary to others throughout the state. We are the 14th, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Ryan, 14th largest district. Our superintendent is compensated as the 33rd best compensated superintendent in the state. I think it's fair. I think we're happy. Any discussions on this item?
Only that all we're doing is rolling and adding a year and then giving a, you know, an increase that's less than what our admin team is getting.
Right.
Yep. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Because people need to understand what's being offered and what's in the details. Because people will make up their own if we don't tell them what's going on.
That is true. It is, we'll be on the site. You can read it. I believe, Andy, and correct me if I'm wrong, basically, we added your increase to your hers.
No, TSA.
TSA. 4%.
Increase in pay.
Pay increase, right.
Any questions on that?
You could put another zero behind the number and I wouldn't take the job for that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve the superintendent contract.
Paul's second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up is certify election results.
I'm going to certify the election results.
Yeah. And thank you for being here, coming to the last few board meetings. Thank you for being willing to serve. You know, I very much appreciate it. I didn't fully understand it until I was here. It's a lot of time and a lot of effort. So I think you're both to be commended to stand up and do it. Thank you very much.
But the pay is awesome.
Yes.
You can, we'll double it.
It'll be fantastic. Okay, who? I hear a motion to move to certify the May 20th, 2025 election results.
I'll second.
Sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right. Hey, this is you, Ryan.
Yeah, I see board member recognition. I don't know if I was supposed to write a speech or something, but I didn't. But I do want to acknowledge that, you know, Chairman Morrison, Chairman Nyquist, this is your last meeting. I want to say, I've been glad to work with you. I appreciate you bringing me on and Sean, I think, would say the same thing and helping get us up to speed. We're going to hopefully try to do the same thing with the people replacing you to make sure that it continues. I've reached that a couple of times already. But mostly, I just really appreciate both of you, your participation, your willingness to serve, your true care for the kids of this community and all the lumps that you've had to take because it's been a tough, there's been some tough situations in the last four years. But I think our district is better off now than when you came on the board. And it's in large part to the work you guys have done, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next thing we're going to talk about is, I guess I'd say just real quick, it's been an honor to do it. I totally believe in public education and I know Roger's the same way. So we need to make the best one possible because our kids deserve it. So let's talk a little bit about, so in July, you're going to be selecting a new chair and vice chair. Roger and I won't be here. Roger, sir, can speak to this as well because he's done it forever at the county. I think it's, you know, if you're chair or vice chair, it takes more time. You know, you're here for a few more meetings. I know in my perfect world, I would not have been vice chair first year in. You know, it's a new kind of dance move. The way this works is way different than most people are used to. So I hope you all give that some consideration next month when you vote in the new chair and vice chair. Ryan, anything you want to say about that?
No, other than, yeah, the time commitment's real and a lot of it's during the day. So that's sometimes be a problem for some people.
Yep. If you have a job, it makes it hard. I would agree. Okay, next up is, I just wanted to talk a little bit about basically that extracurricular activities and how important they are to our overall kids and the reality of the idea that we want to utilize those positions to help our kids make right decisions. And so one of the things we do is, you know, you have more rights and you have more responsibilities. So i.e., you get in trouble if you have issue with alcohol or you're cheating or anything like that. I'm really excited about the fact that Andy has agreed to do a superintendent working group. So I don't want to speak for you, but is that okay, Andy?
Yeah, we'll be working with high school principals, athletic directors, staff to look at how we incorporate that.
So really, we just recognize the fact that we could do it a little better. And so as all things go, we want to make it better. So we're going to do that. The next E7 is extracurricular activities, kind of the same subject we just talked about. F, district leadership.
Let me, I just want to add on that. You know, I was an athlete and I was a coach before I was an administrator. And both as an athlete and a coach, we had student code of conduct, student athlete code of conduct that I had to access. And so I'm surprised we don't have one in this district. So, but I also know that things work best when the people that have to enforce them are the ones that put them together and believe in them. So I'm really glad to hear that you're going to do a committee. And I hope what comes out of that is some sort of a, you know, if you're going to wear our uniforms, you're going to have our emblems on your chest that you represent us in a way that's above and beyond what sort of the run-of-the-mill expectations are in a hallway, if that makes sense. I think that's reasonable. And I think that helps our students be more accountable. So I'm really glad to hear it. I'm looking forward to what they bring back. I think it's really important. And I think it's not just about cheating. It's about all kinds of student behavior and expectation, so.
100%.
Agreed. District leadership team, team updates. Andy?
Yeah, we looked at the agenda and so we didn't add a bunch of slides here. You're welcome. A couple of things, the legislature, energy has moved away from education. They're debating things like the transportation package, things like that. So we don't see any movement that there would be money coming from the legislature right now. We did receive one notification adverse, the Black Student Success Grant that we qualified for. We've been notified that there are across-the-board reductions. Do you want to talk about that just a little bit, Kelsey?
Yeah, in our last meeting with Oregon Department of Education, Jason Dorset and I were informed that across the board, all grants, there will be a reduction of about 20 million. This is largely just due to where we are currently, fiscally, decisions that are being made around what's prioritized in the budget. As well as, I think, historically at times, due to the process of reimbursement from the Oregon Department of Education, it's largely reimbursed these types of grants. And if people aren't getting that money upfront by the time they get it, it's hard to sometimes spend it all. And so historically, some of these grants have had to return funding, which then leads folks to think that it's not necessary or needed, which isn't the case. But that then goes into cuts. I saw that happen with the Latinx success grant last year and a previous grant as well. So we're just looking at how that would impact all grants. It wouldn't be just the Black Student Success Grant. And Jason and I would look at reductions equitably across all stakeholders that are receiving that funding. And as soon as we have updates on that, we would share with you.
Thank you.
And this is state-level cuts, not necessarily federal?
Yeah.
Okay.
The federal package, which has been up for debate now for quite some time, remains. It does have an informal deadline of July 4th to pass the big, beautiful bill. It is experiencing a lot of headwinds. Most of the polling recently has shown a vast majority of Americans disapprove of the bill compared to those who approve of the bill. That would be the funding source for Title I. That's not a big negative or positive. So we anticipate that what we are getting will remain. And then, of course, that's being parsed out differently at the state level. So right now, we'll just keep you guys updated. That is the bill that has vouchers in it. And we don't know whether that's, you know, something that would fall away in a ultimate passing of the bill or not. Lot to keep track of there. The other day, we did have the math teachers for the district take training for one day, full day?
A full day, yes, sir.
And we're moving forward to that. And of course, there's a range of emotions, obviously, about new curriculum. What are we going to do with it? How's it going to work? But it is nice that we have that. May ye is not wrong, right? That our math scores tend to lag. And this is a piece where we have to go to work. And if it's not there, it's harder to do that work. We continue to work on food service with the classified. And we've had some discussions. There is both the new vendor and there are opportunities to restructure. Dave, do you want to just quickly just talk about that quickly? Because we're working here to get done.
Just that there's, it's a good time to take a look at why you're making transition into a program to also look at how you do operations within the kitchens and job descriptions and things like that. So we've been in consultation with the union and working through that. It's been productive. And just about also memorializing how we do business in our kitchen, so it's systematic.
So that work will continue and I think we're meeting again July 1st. The other thing is, we have finished this year, the Center for Educational Leadership's 5D, the new teaching rubric. You will recall that this year, we went into the year without an evaluation of teachers. And so this was just purely a learning situation. And I just really want to compliment the lead teachers, not necessarily special assignment teachers, but sometimes we had classroom teachers come forward with principals to learn that and then share that out. And without evaluation, I have been so impressed with the level of change this year without the duress of an evaluation. And I think that speaks volumes to when we put out good stuff, because this was selected by teachers and administrators last year, the willingness for people to try and to learn. And what we want to do is really shift the fundamental of the district from that we are putting you in rows and we expect you to march in exact step to freeing teachers, to innovate and to respond to those outcomes that are identified there. But I've been really amazed at the level of engagement that the teachers have had. Along with that, we're really working on principals being reflective with teachers. I've had some pretty good feedback around what that looks like. And so looking forward to moving forward on that. And then finally, we ended this year 2.2 days short of a full school year on the calendar. One day, we did not make up that we had lost during the strike. We made up the rest. We started late one day due to weather and we took a whole day off due to weather. So that was 2.25 short of a full calendar year. And so I feel like that was helpful in mitigating what November did. But I also want to point this out. That could not have occurred without teachers and classified being willing to come and help us do that.
Absolutely.
Right? And so, so important. And I want to appreciate those groups at this time for that effort to make the kids and the community as whole as possible. And so that's all I have. We do have to declare on a Division 22 because I think we're about a day and a half of cushion. So to go 2.2 out means that we do have to declare on Division 22 that we were a little bit short. And we will do that in October when we do Division 22 assurances. That's all I have.
Thank you. Business financial report, Jane?
I actually don't have anything additional.
Excellent. Board reports. Sean?
That's his time.
Brad, go ahead.
I again want to point out to Suzie and Jane and bring them to the board, what a masterful job you've done on this budget. I mean, it's been a beast that you continue to work on. I am confident that we're going to be able to bring all of our people back full-time. We've got four people that have had reduced hours. I know you're going to continue to work on it and we'll get there. So I'm so pleased. I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew how hard you and your teams have been working to get this done. When you compare us to the other districts and the amount of strife and problems they're having, yes, we have some blended classes. Yes, we have some things we don't particularly like or don't. Yes, we have some things we don't particularly like or don't, wouldn't like to have. But we've kept our talent. We've kept our people. And from there, we can build. That's so awesome. Thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you.
Roger?
Mr. Chairman, so I'm looking at the agenda. This would be my last opportunity to give comments.
I'm sure you could find another.
A filibuster.
I would like to, I would like to reserve the right to come back to this agenda, this item at the end of the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Ryan?
I don't have anything. Okay. For me, I'd just like to say it's been an honor to be on the board. You know, I, I wasn't fully aware of all the challenges to public education. There are a lot, you know? And I think we all need to prioritize it and understand it and do all we can to make it better. Kids are our future, you know? You know, but it, some of the stuff that's going on is just craziness, you know? Some of it comes from the state, you know, and we don't control that, you know? Last I saw, we have an accountability that's going to be put on us. And one of the things they're going to measure is attendance, right? But five or six years ago, they took away truancy laws. So really, the only thing we can do is ask nicely to have our kids come to school. You know, Oregon's one of the worst attendance rates in the country. Huh. Kind of need them to be at school to have them learn, right? So that's kind of, I, I, I love the fact that the state wants to hold accountable. I don't love the fact that they don't give us the tools to do it. You know, that just seems a little unfair. Budgets that we've seen from the state handed to us, you know, this year's been the best year, you know? We're going to get like a little over 10%. But then when you take the PERS increase off, you get like 4% and you spread that over two years. Wow. You know, look what we're giving to our employees, which they deserve. They deserve big grazers, right? They deserve that. But when you only have 4% to spread it out, that kind of makes it hard. Where do you take that money from? You know, I mean, the state doesn't even abide by their own committee that decides on how much money they should send to the education, which is just crazy. We have decreases in public education. The kids, they're coming to school, you know? The amount of kids, you know, it used to be 92% of the kids would come to public education. Now that's numbered down in the low 80s. That's something to think about, you know? And Joy, you talked to it and there's, there's reasons for it, you know? And that's something we need to try to improve, you know? Because with, with the decrease in students comes a decrease in funding. You know, for me, you know, some of the costs that we're adding to, and, and this one could get me in trouble, I guess, with the unions, but unemployment while you're on strike? And you don't even pay into unemployment insurance? You know, as a business owner, Roger and Brad, we can all talk to this. Employers and employees pay into unemployment insurance. That's how it exists, that you have unemployment insurance, so you can get unemployment insurance. This state, we're, we're one of 11 states that allow public educators to strike. And now we're about to be the only one in the country that pays people while they're striking? Holy cow, if that happened, if that existed prior to this year, there's no way we would have been able to add back days. You know, no way. So I mean, that, that's crazy. Unfortunately, there's a lot of work. So I appreciate you two willing to, and Brad willing to sign up again. It, it, it needs a lot of work. It needs your energy and your expertise and your willingness to work hard. So thank you very much for being willing to do that. My wife's a teacher. I think they just, they do, they do all they can. So thank you to the teachers and all the staff here at GAPS that are working hard to make public education as, as good as it can be. You're putting your time and effort into the students and that is very honorable. So thank you. Next up, Committee, Community and School Presentation, School Resource Officer Report. Andy, it looks like you're on for this.
I don't think we have an officer present, Bruce?
Officer Bell was not able to make it. Officer Williams, I believe, is in Mexico.
Good for her.
And the newly hired SRO, John Wymore, is not reported to duty yet.
So no, no report? Is that what I'm hearing?
We do not have a report.
Okay. I would just say, when I see them out at games or in schools or anything, it, it's amazing. I think it's really important. Kids come up and seem to look upon those mentors and have a real good relationship with them. And I think that's fantastic.
I did meet with them last week and we're going to work on some additional programming at schools to use them as presenters in classrooms to talk about various components of the law and situations that they see and encounter to better educate our students. So they're going to take a pretty proactive step and, and get in classrooms for doing that kind of work, so.
Great. Okay, next up, Consent Agenda.
So Pete, the first item I would like to pull, we're still working with the union on the MOU.
All right, so I, one, we're going to remove.
Yes.
Okay, so I, two, Personnel Classified, do you hear a motion?
I move to approve Personnel Classified as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Personnel District Leadership Team Agreement.
I move to approve DLT Financial Agreement as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Personnel AAA Agreement.
I move to approve Administrator Agreement as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Is there any reason that we can't post this, just like the other?
I believe they are posted.
Yeah.
Okay.
The language, and there is a bunch, is still, I think we're still working with AAA on all of the language. But.
How do we approve something we don't have the language to?
This is the financial agreement only.
Got it.
Yep, the language.
Okay.
We just need to finalize it.
Okay. Well, and one of the most important things to, to note here for these contracts is they're at or less than our teachers and classified have got.
So the AAA agreement, we shared that in the budget process that we ranked last in all but one position. And that position ranked next to last.
Right.
Across all comparisons. And so moving this up, I think is fair. And also, I think anyone would agree how important a leader is in a building. And we want to make sure that we have the ability to bring quality leaders in and retain them.
Okay, so where are we on this? Did we get someone to?
I think we have a motion in a second.
Okay, any discussion? That's where we were. Okay, none? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? A Personnel Confidential Agreement.
So I, I do want to talk about the confidential. We did a, an analysis of comparative districts here. Confidential, the classified, of course, were the first that we did comparisons for. And we found obviously that we were very low, particularly at the top end. And that was solved in 2023 in December, followed by certified, which also showed to be low. Confidential was similarly low and has not really been corrected until this time. And we are anywhere, we're right in the neighborhood of about 25% below other districts on the average. And so it is, it is the last group that is often thought about. This agreement will move us up to about the 40th percent in three years, the 40th percentile. And it's just the last group to be fixed.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve Confidential Agreement as presented.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Minutes, Regular Board Meeting, 6/9/25.
Through the minutes, Regular Board Meeting of 6/9/25 is presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Jay, Old Business, Board Policy Sections I and J. Bruce?
So at our last meeting, you were presented with a packet of, of board policies, Sections I and J that needed amending and updating. You had the opportunity to read through those suggested policy changes. I just want to offer the opportunity to ask any question or answer any questions that you may have based on the changes that were presented.
What are the nature of those changes? What's the, what's the content of the?
Yeah, so each year OSBA provides us with suggested updated language that their legal team and has gone through to make sure that our policies are up to date. There were no changes of substance to any of the policies. They are just coming to current language and meeting the needs of our district.
My understanding is it's all, it's all externally driven. There's no internal driven.
That's right.
That's right. There are very minor things that we select. So yeah.
Would you like a list of all of them? Or are you curious of the content of them? Or I'll say I could read them off for you if that helps.
I think I will take the opportunity to comment on general and board policies and our relationship with the, with the OSBA.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't pay a nickel for the advice they give us relating to how we run board meetings and how they view elected officials engaging with members of the public or not. And I have a few regrets over the last four years. And, and one of those was not being, not sticking to my guns relating to board policies and recommendations coming from people who just aren't experts, in my view. And while I will vote for this tonight, I, I, I'm welcoming the opportunity to encourage the board going forward to, with some scrutiny, examine what a group of people who have no vested interest in this community or individual board members' performance or ability to serve, come down and just pass it as pro forma. So thank you for the opportunity to let me comment on, on all of that.
No problem.
I'd like to move to approve Board Policy Sections I and J as presented.
I'll second. And for the record, I look through them and they're all fine.
Yeah. Okay.
From, from an educator.
From, from G and I or, or all of them?
Well, the G I ones.
The part that says you can't ask a staff person a question without giving them 24 hours notice? The part where you can't?
I might have missed that one.
You have to vote in block with everybody else and can't disagree in public? I mean.
Not in this one? I just thought somebody.
It's not in this one, but it, it's, they're there somewhere.
Okay.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. New Business, new policy, Board Policy Sections C, E, G and I. We already did I.
It's only one additional section from I. I, I, I don't know if, who wants to introduce this because there's several people listed.
Oh, you sound eager.
Well, that's only because I know the one mention of I because it was just discussed.
Sure.
So you can see that there are a couple that deal directly with administrators, layoff of administrators, evaluation of administrators. We are working to look as well at CPA. And CPA is shorter. Over time, this district had written, I don't know, six pages into a, into an administrative policy. And we have been working to transition that into the Administrator Agreement and out of Board Policy, where we believe it belongs. So this is a very short version of CPA, which is pretty standard for most districts. And then there are other things there. You can see when you look at, for example, sexual harassment, these are changes that are a result of legislative changes. And so pro forma, there is a value in having Board Policy to contain these laws so that people can find them, right? If, if we have people having to go out and search for different agencies or whatever, it would make it very difficult to, to be on top of that. So the fact that these are contained in policy has a value because then there is a place where people in this district can go to look at these things. They should reflect the law. One of the places we get in trouble, and you can see by this huge number of policies, is just keeping up with what the legislature does is the challenge.
Do I hear a motion?
I think that one was New Business.
Isn't this a first read on these?
First read?
It, it is, but.
Do we need a motion?
It's on the motion.
Yes. To approve Board Policy Sections C through I Updates as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we already did everything down to.
L six.
L six, so Facility Plan Contract Approval. Mr. Boland?
Yeah, really quickly, the district has been engaged in a long range seeking out a company to run a long range facility planning. We started this in March and we had five respondents. And of those five respondents, our committee selected three to do interviews. Sean was a part of that group. The district. Thank you, Sean. The district has selected Sage Architecture to run that process for us. The funding from this comes from two TAP grants largely that the district has applied for. And then the remaining funds will be generated from the remaining bond dollars moving forward. So it's no cost to the district except for the bond funds. So we originally put this on the agenda because it was anticipated it could be over 150,000. Seeing it's under that, the board doesn't have to take action on that. But it can be informational or you can improve that moving forward.
Thank you for your work on this, Dave.
Yep.
Okay, Other Business, N1 Administrative Regulation.
Point of, should we just, it's on the agenda. Should we go approve it? So that somebody goes back to look at the agenda, they don't wonder what we did?
We, we could. It's not on here for, but it's under.
Oh, it's not, okay. If it doesn't matter, I guess it doesn't matter.
Other Business Administrative Regulation Updates, G I and J. Suzie or Bruce?
These, I believe, are the same that were presented up above. I don't know what.
These were not voting.
I don't know which ones were J.
I think this is first read.
Yeah.
AR, AR, we don't approve ours, right? So it's informational.
That's correct. So these are the ARs to the, some of the, the policies that were listed up above. These are informational items that you have access to, to see how we're going to actually implement the board policies administratively.
Okay, thank you. All right, Roger, you wanting the mic or last opportunity?
Well, thanks to all of you. It's been an honor to serve with you. It's, it's been the best of times and there were times it's felt like something less than that. So thank all of you for sticking with this and conducting yourselves with honor and, and representing the community. I feel really blessed to have been born and grown up in this community where there's so much passion for kids. There really is. And the challenge is, is that to get all that passion rowing in the same direction. And there's times that's happened and there's times that that hasn't. And I, I don't know how or, how or when you build the, the team building component into all of this for a district leadership, that the union leadership and the players involved to, to improve that. But it's really important. We've made some progress, but I think that the, the community deserves and expects continued improvement in that area. Some of the things that I think that we've improved that I, that I would like to touch on and maybe remind the board is that we've reduced the number of executive sessions down to almost nothing, certainly compared to what they were when we got here four years ago. And that's important for a couple of reasons. One is the, the optics and the public perception. Anytime you go behind closed doors as a governing body of a public organization, the public just doesn't know what you're doing. And it's easy to suspect the worst. And so I hope that you all will, will, will stick with that. The other thing about executive sessions, it's, is if you don't have an attorney present, it's easy to get yourself in trouble. And that's, that's not a good idea. One of the changes that we made pretty much on day one was that anything related to dollars, to money, we vote on. It wasn't that way before, and I'm not critical of the previous board because the OSBA advised them to just literally stuff everything in the consent agenda. And if there was no opposite, opposition to the consent agenda, to tap the gavel and move on. I think it's important for the community and for the public that when it relates to money over a threshold amount, that it, that an up or down vote is taken. I think the relationship between South Albany and West Albany, the kids, is, it's better than it's been in a long time. And we as adults could do good to follow their lead. It's not an us versus them situation, as I observe it. And I'm very happy about that for, for the kids and for the community that that's improved. It, it's been an honor to represent the South Albany Red Hawk community. The grit, the determination. Probably amongst the highlights, we're watching the South Albany Girls volleyball team win a state championship for the first time in the 45 history of that school. I will miss these meetings sometimes and wish the district nothing but the best going forward. One of the holes I see that I didn't really understand when I got this involved in education was the, the isolation, if you will, in legislative agendas and education in its totality, not working together to pursue an agreed upon agenda in the way of funding, in the way of requirements, in the way of everything going forward. And I have, I have a little experience in that building and, and doing those things and would be happy to help if there's, if there's the desire to do so. It's, it's been great. Thanks to all of you. I've learned a lot. I'll also say that, that this position has made everything else I do in my life easier. If that makes sense to you. So thank you all and, and congratulations to the new board members. And thank you for stepping up and wish you the best.
Thank you for your service, Pete and Roger. Really appreciate it.
All right. That is it. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll move, we adjourn.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a great night, everybody.